I have to order this meeting of the Marmel Planning Commission, March 25th, 2021. Mr. Grummer, do we have announcements?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder for Planning Commissioners to speak into the mic when you're speaking. And then also, we received the filed plat for Country Club of Arkansas Lot 621R replat, which was reviewed and approved by Planning Commission on a previous month. And that is all of our announcements. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to approval of the minutes, Commissioners. You have been presented with minutes in your packet. Does anyone have any corrections to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I noted that I was present and absent at the same time. I believe I was absent and would like to express the kindness of the Commissioners in their election of officers in my absence. And express my gratitude.
Very fortunate because I was raised in my majesty's chair.
Yeah, just don't miss again.
And I actually did catch that after the fact, so we have made that edit. It just doesn't show up here.
Thank you.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve minutes as corrected. Second?
Motion is second and in discussion. Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Minutes are approved. I have no public comments on non-agenda items. I'll open the public hearing. We have no old business, so we'll move to new business. Item number one, the proposed final plat of Hillman addition. Mr. Grummer, staff report, please.
So this is the final plat. This final plat is located in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction to the east of Marshay and will require right-of-way dedication to the county for the roadway. All county and city staff comments have been addressed, with the exception of the lot being three times more than it is wide. The applicant is requesting variance to Section 70-135(c) to allow this lot to be more than three times as deep as it is wide, because surrounding lots have been configured this way. The Commissioners have been provided with a copy of the subdivision variance checklist, which we had set out on your chair, and staff recommends approval of the variance request and approval of the final plat contingent on meeting city and county staff comments and any additional Commissioner comments. I will make note that variance will need to be a separate item, so there would need to be a motion to approve the variance prior to approval of the final plat.
Do we need to convene Board of Adjustment?
No, this is in subdivision, so it's not in the zoning committee, so no, sir.
Thank you. Would anybody like to propose to put the variance on the agenda?
Make a motion to place the variance on the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, we will now hear the variance. See, Mr. Redder is here on behalf of the applicant. Any Commissioners have any questions of staff or the applicant's representative?
Scott, this was placed in our chairs. Did you prepare this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just make sure that somebody else did. Thank you.
Any further question or comment on the variance? Anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve the variance for the, is it Hillman? Is that how you pronounce it?
Hillman.
Hillman, thank you. The Hillman addition. Any other comments?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right. Variance is approved. We'll now move back to item number one, the proposed final plat. Any questions or comments of staff or the applicant? No further comment? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the final plat for the Hillman addition.
Second.
Motion in multiple seconds. Any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Final plat is approved. We'll move on to item number two, the proposed preliminary plat of Pinnacle View subdivision. Mr. Grummer, staff report.
So, Mr. Chair, this request is for the approval of the preliminary plat for Pinnacle Heights subdivision, previously Pinnacle View. It's a 221-lot phased, single-family detached subdivision with a neighborhood clubhouse and a pool. It lies in the county on 80 acres immediately to the west of the Marmel city limits at the current terminus of Ridgeland Drive. This project will connect Ridgeland Drive to Settlement Road, consistent with both the city and county master street plan. The developer has Track A of North Ridge subdivision at the end of Ridgeland Drive under contract, which will allow for a 60-foot-wide extension of Ridgeland Drive to the city limit line. And that track was on the Ridgeland, the North Ridge subdivision, as part of future expansion. The applicant is proposing the extension of Ridgeland to be a public road, but the connecting residential roads to be private gated roads. At least that was the initial. This may change, and there are applicant representatives here who could probably explain that better. The city engineer recommends converting Phase 7 of the phase plan to one large track until secondary access is acquired, although the applicant added notes to the plat that would not allow more than 30 homes to be built on a cul-de-sac unless a secondary fire-approved access road is provided. Let's see. If annexed into the city of Marmel and private streets are developed, private streets are not allowed in an R1 zoning, which they did note on the plat. It was to be R1 zoning, so that would need to be addressed. And the things I'm mentioning right now are just part of the comments that were provided in your packet, but mainly the main points. The current bill of assurance does not specify how private roads in public areas are to be maintained. This must be provided prior to approval of the final plat. County comments were provided to you and included concerns over Settlement Road not having the necessary width to accommodate the proposed traffic generated by this subdivision without substantial improvement being constructed and to provide a traffic study for Settlement Road going west. So, a reminder to Commissioners that the approval tonight, or the vote tonight, stays with Planning Commission, does not go to City Council. Also, the applicant does not have an approved preliminary plat until all conditions are met and the preliminary plat is executed by both city and county officials. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary phase plat contingent on meeting county and city approval of the street and drainage plans and meeting city staff, county, and Commissioner requirements. And that concludes my comments.
I have three public comment cards on this item, so we will, I'll first remind everyone making comments, we do have a three-minute limit on your public comments. And first, we will start with Ms. Melissa Bradford. As you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Melissa Bradford. Address is 168 Ridgeland Drive.
Go ahead.
And I just wanted to voice my concerns. I bought my house two years ago specifically because it was on the cul-de-sac. I have a young son, and it's for his safety so he can safely ride his bicycle. There's other people in our community that pull their cars down so their children can ride in our cul-de-sac area, and with this road, it would be very unsafe for the children, including my child in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Now we have Ms. Mary Garrett. Again, name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Mary Garrett, and I live at 169 Ridgeland Drive with my husband, James. Just because I am next door right to where this road will go through, and, you know, we've been there 20 years, we've maintained that property even though it wasn't ours for 20 years, which probably isn't either here nor there, but, you know, the road is going to be pretty much right on top of us as that goes through there. And along the lines that Melissa said, is, you know, we bought up there because it was the end of the city limits, and I'm well aware of the master street plan and that you have to give people access to their property. But, you know, I think it's going to increase the traffic on Ridgeland to such a great degree if that's going to be the way in and out. You know, I didn't see on the plans where they were going to come through, where they can exit to Settlement 365. And I'm sure that's some things that would be in your planning, and as this goes through, if it does, you know, I would ask that at least those of us that have been up there so long that bought for that very reason could be considered for some green space behind us. I see there's plans for a dog park, which would back up pretty much almost to my neighbor's pool, and he has some concerns about that. He's in a wheelchair right now and can't come to speak, so that's my concerns about it. Number one, the traffic and us being able to get out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Third comment card is from Mary and Fred Payton.
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Mary Payton, and a lot of you know me, but a lot of you don't. Well...
153 Hibiscus.
153 Hibiscus. This is my husband, Fred. We're newlyweds.
Right.
So, it's hard for us to remember. Mm-hmm. How many years?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six years.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We moved to Marmel. I know we only have three minutes, but I guess between the two of us, we've got six, right? Doesn't work that way. All right, we'll talk about this. We moved to Marmel in 1983, and I've been a very integral part of the Marmel planning and development team. I went to work for Jess Odom and worked for him for a couple of years, and then as ownership changed, I kind of changed with it. And we actually have titled two acres and acres of land in Marmel, and we are in the process now of trying to decide what to do with it all. So, this is a part of the acreage that we actually own. We are so pleased with the development plans that they have. I always knew that just about the time we got ready to retire, we would run out of buildable property in Marmel. And if I could approach, I have a couple of printouts for you, and I actually have ten copies. This is, the first is active home listing in Marmel, and the second is active lot listing in Marmel. Just to kind of summarize, we're out of land. We are out of building lots in Marmel. We are down to, I think there are 12 active home listings in the entire city. And, you know, growing without having the ability to expand to new space is going to be an absolute possibility. So, not only is it a very desirable plan, but if you want to keep the city moving, it's going to have to go west into that residential area, because basically, that's all that's ready for now. It is beautiful land, lots of rolling hills, very, very nice, very nice. But, you know, once again, I think the important thing is need, and it's not just a matter of want. It's a matter of, is my time up?
Unfortunately so.
It's a matter of need. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be here.
Yes, I do. I get three minutes, Donna. Sure. I'm Fred Payton. I'm Mary's husband, live 153 Hibiscus Drive. We've been here, like she says, since 1983. We've lived in our current home for 23 years on Hibiscus, backs up to Lake Willistee. We've owned the property at the ends of Ridgeway for a long time and had that property specifically because it led to the property to the west for development. And we've had for-sale signs down there from time to time for the property and had calls on the property. People wanting to build a house, and it wasn't large enough for a house. It's strictly large enough for a road. And our for-sale signs on that property always disappeared. Now, I don't know who in the world would have thrown those signs away, but somebody pulled them up and threw them away because they didn't want that lot to sell. But it is for sale, and it does lead to that property, and it's a natural entrance from Marmel into that property. And we're very much in favor of the development, not only because we have the lot that leads into it, but because we, as Realtors, see the possibilities for growth in the city and for business for Realtors and builders and everybody else to develop that area. So, we're very much in favor of it, and I hope you guys will be too. Thank you.
Back online. Do we have any questions or comments from the Commission of Staff or the applicant?
Question of the applicant.
The applicant's representative, please approach. Good evening. Name and address, please.
Jess Griffin, 200 Casey Drive, Marmel.
Hi, Jess. Good evening.
Good evening.
We just heard from the Paytons about the natural entrance of Marmel, the Marmel citizens, and the expansion and the growth, and how this is going to be a wonderful addition to Marmel. But I don't see, or I have or heard anything regarding your applicant's willingness to annex. So, can you bring up to speed on this? Can you bring us up to speed on that issue?
We plan on annexing. We're waiting for approval from y'all, and as soon as that happens, he'll have his attorney, Brad Walker, contact Melissa and try to work out the agreement and start that process. We also met with the mayor and with planning, just to kind of set the groundwork and see what page everybody was on. The meeting went really well. We just got to get the paperwork done and get the bill of assurance approved. And our idea with the private roads, we're wanting to do public, and we're wanting to do the same precedent set by the M subdivision or the Cypress Bay development. I mean, where the gates just open and they're all public roads.
Let's handle one item at a time.
So...
I'm back on the annexation. So, is there a requirement for preliminary plat to be approved for request for annexation? Madam City Attorney?
Is there a requirement for the plats to be approved? No, I mean, it doesn't, we can approve it as it is in the ETJ, but it's still subject to all of our planning ordinances. So, I mean, it's not required to be annexed for the plat to be approved.
So, as the plat currently sits, then the piece of property can be annexed into the city of Marmel? Or does somebody know that?
In fact, I think what Commissioner Johnson is asking is, if anything on this plat does not conform with Marmel standards, are we going to have an issue annexing the property? I.e., should we be treating this as if it were within the city limits if the intention is to annex?
It can be annexed before. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it can be.
It can be annexed without being...
So, I don't quite understand the philosophy about the bill assurance being prepared and those items. The request for annexation could occur before those items are complete. That was my question, is that, the applicant's response led me to believe that those items would need to be prepared prior to the annexation request moving forward?
No, the bill of assurance just has to be ready before the final plat is approved, not for annexation.
I just knew that's a document that you'd have to review. I mean, that's part of the process. Yeah. Sir?
So, can you help me with the timing about why we're seeing the final, if the intent is for annexation, why are we seeing the final plat?
Actually, you're seeing the preliminary plat.
The preliminary, yeah. Excuse me. The preliminary, thank you, Scott. The preliminary plat prior to the request for annexation.
Well, we met with the mayor, and we tried, I mean, we're trying to get the annexation going. So, we've started the process, and that's where we're at right now. We've got to come to an agreement, basically.
But we would be approving property to that as an ETJ.
Right.
So, is there a difference, Scott, between the two? So, if we approve with ETJ and those requirements, is it all one and the same?
Well, from your approval process, you're reviewing Section 70 of our subdivision ordinance. So, the guidelines of that ordinance are the guidelines, that there's nothing different whether if it's in the city or outside the city when it comes to Section 70 of the subdivision. What happens is, though, is after the preliminary plat, if it is approved, then we still are able to require that the streets and the infrastructure meet the requirements of the city, which is in Section 70 of the subdivision. The only thing is, we don't enforce Section 94, which is our zoning ordinance in the county, which means if the final plat is approved, then we would not have inspection and permitting capability on the new construction of homes. But that is not part of the review process for the preliminary plat. Does that answer your question? There is no difference between reviewing the subdivision and the ATJ or the city as far as I'm...
What about the difference through the permit application process? So, if preliminary plat's approved, the final plat would have to be prior to the final plat before building permits are issued, correct?
Right, so the final plat process is the same. We have to verify and make sure that they've met the intent of the street and drainage plans that's been built and constructed accordingly, and the final plat's not approved until that's verified. And I guess I would like to also mention that the road extension to this area out into the county was originally designed on the North Ridge subdivision that is currently in the city of Marmel. So, this was originally designed as an extension into that area.
Say that again, Scott.
So, the parcel that was spoken to, there's a 60-foot easement at the end of Ridgeland Drive. I say easement, there's a parcel that is 60 feet wide, and that track of land was designed to align with the roadway to be an extension of Ridgeland Drive into that area of the county for future annexation or growth.
Yes. My mother-in-law used to live on the cul-de-sac until she passed away.
So, is the intent of the master street plan for the connection, they're going to have it gated for the continuance, the way to understand the master street plan, it was supposed to connect to Settlement, which connects 365, so when the developer does not, they're going to gate that off?
So, they're not allowed to build any more than 30 houses out there unless they have a secondary access, and the secondary access would have to be Settlement Road. I believe, and they can speak more to it, I believe their intent was to do the first phase, and then when they do the second phase would be the extension of that road to Settlement and connect it, but it would be a secondary fire access road, not a primary access for residents. So, their primary access point is Ridgeland Drive.
So, at some point in time, this emergency gate is going to go away?
We have designed the plat so that that could be possible, so we could fulfill the plan of the master street plan. But the county does not want us to connect because they said the road is not to the level of service needed to facilitate through traffic. I don't believe the city wants to connect. I've talked to the Bradley family that's adjacent there. They're okay with everything on the development. They didn't want any connection right there. So...
So, if you...
I took the connection off, but I designed that one road to have 60-foot of right-of-way to meet code. And there is a code where it has 60-foot right-of-way, 27-foot back-to-back, and it's some kind of certain collector that y'all have in your classification system. So, I tried to do everything to meet your code and your classification, so when we do annex, it fits the master plan, it fits the county master plan, it fits your code. That was my intent. And then we put, I could put a cul-de-sac after the second revision when I turned it back into them after the comments from the county, and that's basically why that changed.
Okay, Jess, so where is your secondary access going to be as you develop out?
That is. It's just, you don't have to have like a permanent access. It just has to be for emergency.
Okay, thank you.
So, when this is all developed out, there's only one way in and one way out?
Unless there's an emergency. There'll be two other ways out that will be emergency.
Well, there is...
I'm not speaking about an emergency. I'm talking about people living...
Right.
One way in, one way out.
Right. Unless the county or the city decides to change that through the master plan, because that's, the connection like in 30 years might happen, but right now, we're not connecting. We don't want to connect.
So, county right-of-way, what's that, Jess? County right-of-way comes to this location as you've shown, so the emergency access. So, you're calling...
I have not, I have not looked into that, but I just know it's on their master plan and it's on yours. That's all that I've reviewed.
Let me ask it a different way. So, as this comes out, is, as it currently sits, is there, how do you plan on accessing that point? So, you're going to have to get it even? Or you're going, or does the county, you're going to have to have some means across this property owner that you mentioned to connect to wherever the county right-of-way starts?
I don't know the answer to tell you yes or no if there's right-of-way. I know that there is paved road to the property line, so my guess would be, yes, there's already right-of-way established there. They've already also built a bridge crossing further down Settlement that's already 36 feet wide to meet a collector status. I'm not sure what they own. I just, I know that we're doing it to meet the master plan standards and to meet what could happen in the future. We also didn't put, we didn't put any gates on the road that would connect to Settlement if it happened in the future, because we didn't want to impede any kind of flow or break any rules of the master plan.
Other than the emergency gates that show them?
Well, that, and that's per county request. It's like the short Marshay issue, where that road was not to the standards to have through traffic, and so they put that knockbox, and it's only there for emergency access. That's exactly the same scenario that's going to happen here. We'll put up a gate with a knockbox and allow for emergency vehicles to get through if needed.
I'm not familiar with the process for annexation. It's something that we don't do too much of. Can you, Scott or Madam City Attorney, help me understand the timing of that? So, once this request comes in from the owner, what is the process that has to go through?
Apologize, I didn't bring that, we have a process. It's all spelled out. I didn't bring it with me, and I don't have it memorized, unfortunately. But basically, I mean, they make an application to the county. Most of the process goes through the county government, and then basically, sort of on the back end, we just approve it after they've done their request to the county to be able to annex into Marmel.
So, the permission has to come from the county first? It doesn't go, regardless of our position with it, it has to be approved by the county?
It needs to be submitted and go through their process, yes.
Has any discussions been made with the county on that, Jess, with your applicant? Has any discussions been made with the county on that, Jess, with your applicant? Has there been any annexation, or I guess this is, I don't want to say the annex, I'm from the county, but I guess you're moving.
We have told the county our intent, that we want to come into Maumell, that's our intent.
And are you familiar with how long that process takes?
We have, our, my client has an attorney, his name's Brad Walker, and he specializes in that type of stuff, and he's gonna help handle it for us. I, I just thought they're two separate issues, but if we do annex in, that's why we went to the private roads.
You just said if, so are you going to, or are you?
And we're going to annex, our plan is to annex. Until something happens, I can't guarantee it's gonna happen.
And I'll, I'll, I'll make a comment that the subdivision, subdivision ordinance does not, it does not have wording for requiring annexation as a part of the approval of the subdivision preliminary plat. As far as the process, it's, it can be voluntary and they can do that, or we can take it to an election and be 100% for the city to annex it in, but ultimately, I'm, I'm not too sure whether or not if the approval or denial of the, of the plat, preliminary plat, can be based upon whether if it is or is not annexed in.
Well, yeah, I mean, annexation is not, it, it has to comply with all of our planning ordinances, according to the state statute.
And building ordinances?
It doesn't indicate building ordinances in the state statute. I, I also, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused about, and I didn't understand until you just described it, the difference in the master street plan, like this, this actually will not be in fulfillment of the master street plan because of the gate, are we, have we talked about?
I'm not putting any gates on the road that's on the master street plan, that's what I was saying.
Except for the emergency.
Except for what the county specified us to do. I can't not do what the county tells me to do.
Well, the county's specifying you to do that because you don't, you don't want to.
Regardless, if we came into the city, the county would still make the city or me put that gate there. They do not want through traffic.
It sounds like we may need to amend the master street plan.
No, because it's on their master street plan too, so I think you're okay. It's all in, it's all working together, but until, basically until that land is developed and they improve the road, they don't want through traffic. Once someone tries to change that land, they're gonna have to do the improvements of the road so they can make it where traffic could come, basically travel on that road. If someone tried to develop now, they would make them fix the road.
Do we know that that road's up to a standard for emergency vehicles?
We did, you told me that the fire department did go look at it and it was, it would work for emergencies.
The fire department did travel on Settlement Road and they did say that it's recently been improved and they didn't have a concern with driving over Settlement Road. Their issue was Tracks Road to the north, which has a proposed connection in the future for that, that cul-de-sac, which by the way, was mentioned, is too long and doesn't meet the requirements of the subdivision ordinance without connection to Tracks Road. Tracks Road would have to be improved, it, it is not navigable by emergency access.
This piece of property is not under the jurisdiction of the city Maumell Fire Department.
That's correct.
So was the county fire department also, did they also approve it?
Again, we didn't, I, we didn't receive comments from the county fire department, but they would have to meet the requirements of, as far as the civil plans and all that from, from the county.
And Jess, if you can clarify something for me, something Commissioner Johnson hit on. Did I hear correctly that you have not directly verified that the county right-of-way extends to where that emergency gate's gonna be, you just reviewed the master street plans?
I, yeah, I, I believe it is. I believe they even have an easement that goes all the way to the Maumell Valley Estates subdivision, because there was, I, I talked to a landowner, he told me about how the Star Farm had got a property and they needed access to their main area, and so there is county access, so he could have access to his property all the way through that Settlement Road, and it's.
That, that should be readily ascertainable information and that, that's a pretty critical, critical piece of information for me, because if you can't verify you have this secondary access.
The county didn't bring it up, so I'd assume that it's, there is right-of-way.
And in clarification, I spoke, I'm sorry, in clarification, I spoke with Steve Brummett, who's the director of public works for the county, and he did verify that there is right, it's a 50-foot right-of-way on Settlement Road. They do maintain it.
To the point of access to this development?
Well, I didn't. The map.
He already asked a question, he said he didn't know before, so he just said he didn't know now, so.
We submitted to the county, that was not their comment.
So on ours, it's 60 feet and we require 60-foot right-of-way on our collector, but the county, the county is a 50-foot there, so it would have to be improved to meet collector standards into the future if it's to be used as a collector road. It doesn't, Settlement Road does not meet collector standards.
So in, in the master plan regarding that ETJ, does the 60-foot requirement with, is, is, we, we have to adhere to that? So meaning that it would have to be, it would only be to this development? So you carry 60, then whatever is on out on Settlement Road is what it is?
Correct, whatever develops on out would have to meet that requirement.
If they keep going west.
Correct.
Further comments, questions from the commission?
Yeah, I do have one. If we approve this preliminary plat, we're approving the whole thing, is that correct? They can only build 30 houses as it stands right now, but we would be approving that whole.
So you'd be approving a phased preliminary plat similar to, to the Country Club of Arkansas, was a phased preliminary and they built it, you know, one, one final phase at a time? So yes, that is correct, you'd be, you'd be approving the entire preliminary?
At the time of the final plat, I would have to adhere to all the rules and regulations to follow the final plat, and then we could build the buildings. So I mean, the rules will all have to be met.
I did some checking today, I think I'm gonna just share this with commissioners, you know, there is no obligation for this applicant to annex, none. You know, if we've been if and maybe and it can be and we gotta meet this, we gotta meet that, and who knows? But, you know, so I asked if there was an emergency call that was made in this subdivision, how, how would that be addressed? And I did ask Madam City Attorney about mutual aid agreement, which I think is great.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, what's, what's gonna happen, and I, I just, I'm a pretty, you know, confident person, which I would say is in the police department, there's no representation here, so I can't have him come out, but he's actually on vacation, but he took my call. So the, the point is, is that it's gonna bounce to the closest cell tower, which is gonna go to the 911 at Maumell, and it's gonna come outside the city limits, and then they're gonna call the county and say, this is the county's to deal with, and then the county is gonna come back and say, well, the sheriff's gonna take 20 minutes to respond, they're gonna call Maumell PD and Maumell PD's gonna respond. And same thing's gonna happen with fire, same thing. So all, you know, regardless of these people coming in or out, they're using all of our tax base, the money that, that we pay all as constituents, to be able to provide emergency services here. Now, CAW being a third party, North Little Rock being a third party, I don't know if you make the same claim, but I can tell you for fire and police, regardless of the, of aid, if somebody's in trouble, we're gonna be responding to this area, and it's gonna be in the county. And you have trash trucks, so, you know, if, if this is emergency access, it's still closer for all of our emergency services to serve this area, and our trash to serve this area. And it would be cheaper for the people that live here to have our trash service serve the area. So, you know, and I, I don't know, I don't get a, a good feeling from the applicant regarding their commitment to that at all.
Sir, name and address, please?
I'm Dr. Ramsey, 5 Brittany Drive, Maumell, I'm the builder developer. So it is my intent to bring this into the city. I have had a very fruitful meeting with the mayor and his staff, and we agreed that we would like to bring it into the city, including Mr. Grummer. So when both parties are agreeable, we're gonna bring it into the city. Now the lawyers just have to cross the Ts and dot the Is and make it happen.
Well, I would look forward to that to happen before we commit to preliminary plat, that's just my preference.
That's fine, but, you know, both parties, the city wants it, we want it, so that's where I am.
So you would be willing to apply for that annexation prior to the approval of the preliminary plat tonight?
No, that, these are two separate issues.
I understand the.
Completely separate issues. We would like to get the preliminary plat approved, and then the attorneys can talk and make this happen.
Madam City Attorney, question, would it be proper for us to approve this contingent upon annexation?
Um.
Or is that overstepping?
I, I, I don't think you can approve a contingent on annexation because you have to, I mean, you're, you're looking at it or reviewing it based on whether it complies with all of our planning and zoning ordinances. And if it doesn't, it shouldn't be approved, and if it does, it should be approved. So I, I very much agree that annexation seems to be desirable for both parties in a lot of ways, but I mean, I, I don't have any idea exactly when that's gonna happen.
But didn't Scott say we can't review this for zoning because it's not annexed? We're only looking at it for subdivision?
We, we only, we only review subdivision in the ETJ, and annexation is not a, an item of requirement within that section 70 of the subdivision ordinance?
Any planning ordinances under state law. We, we can review in the ETJ for any planning ordinances under 1456 413.
Further questions or comments from the commission?
So we didn't talk about these gates, but just the understanding is that there's, there's, the one that, on the emergency is gonna be locked, probably have a knockbox, and then everything else north of what is proposed to be RAS Way is all private. So none of that will be dedicated. It wouldn't be, as, as I see it with the emergency gate, you can't dedicate anything to the, to the county.
It is our intent to dedicate all the roads to the city as we go along. We'll build it and give it to the city for free.
So then those have to be operable gates, right, Madam City Attorney?
They ha, it has to be open to the public.
It will be. That's, that is exactly the plan.
And you would have to receive variances to have those structures in the right-of-way.
Yeah, well, when we get there, but our intent is to build operable gates that will open up to the people, they'll drive in, it'll be city streets, city, everything. It's just the, the independent structures will belong to the people who own, who own the homes.
So you are gonna dedicate it?
Yes.
So we have, so if you, if you can't work things out and you have this emergency gate, you can't dedicate anything to the county? There, am I missing something? You, you, it's locked up? So they don't want you, they don't want you to come down Settlement, and you don't work things out on the annexation, you have to have the emergency gates there, so none of this would be dedicated to the county, because they don't want gates in any one of them.
We will come to an agreement with the city, that will happen. It's just a matter of getting the lawyers to agree on the wording, that is all.
I mean, I, just to note, I mean, typically at the preliminary plat stage is when I prepare ordinances dedicating those public improvement, the, the streets and to the city. I can't do that. So, I mean, just so everybody understands, I will not prepare dedication ordinances based on the fact that it's in the county, and that can't happen until you annex in.
Correct.
And I, and I appreciate your candor, and I appreciate that, but, you know, there's been lots of folks here with the best intentions on development, and in fact, I passed one today, I was like, I thought we approved that, and made a phone call, so, oh yeah, it's, it's on hold, I, which has been eight or nine months now. And I know that you have the best intention, but things can fall apart. And then we have a subdivision that's planned to move forward, and say you sell it, somebody comes and makes you admit, I mean, you know, Mary was nice enough to provide that, it seems like pretty good going rate for property, so I'm sure that you'd have an offer. So you have to understand our position and hesitation and reservation, well, at least mine personally.
My history of development in West Little Rock is one where I carry through what I promised, and I come up with only A-plus properties. So all I can say is, look at what I've done, not what people say.
I want to point out also that Stone Ridge did not annex, had gates, had very similar layout, and you approved it. Also, is the character of this neighborhood any different than the character of other neighborhoods in your? I mean, it fits your code pretty well, there's a few variants, maybe.
That's why I think it's a great idea to go ahead and get that annexation before you and get it through it. I don't disagree with your position on that.
When I met with planning, they didn't say we have to annex to get approval from the planning commission. That's, how did Stone Ridge get approved?
Was it, can, it's, it's.
I don't remember, where is Stone Ridge?
It's on 365, is that right?
It separates.
Okay, so it, it has county access.
Yeah, it has access to the property anywhere.
As opposed to going through a Maumell neighborhood for your primary access?
I have a problem with adding, how many lots, is it 220? That's roughly 440 cars going down Ridgeland.
A collector classified street, 36-foot back-to-back.
But that's your only way in and out. If there's a house fire on Ridgeland, now they show up, they gotta drive all the way back around to the settlement, wait on the train to cross, and then get in there.
Ridgeland Drive is a 36-foot back-to-back collector street, classified and able to handle 400 more cars.
Anything further from the commission?
Scott, I think there's nine comments outstanding still yet on the application and a couple from the county. Of course, some of these are easy, so you went through those, how many remain?
We received, some of the comments were, I don't have the number.
I'm talking about the checklist.
Yeah, there's, some of those items haven't been fulfilled yet, some, I don't have a number on you yet. I can go through it and I can tell you which ones.
That's okay.
This is also a number of items on the county's list too, if I read that right.
Which items are not fulfilled?
So, the.
Do you have a copy of the checklist?
I do, but I turned in, I tried to address all those comments and turned in responses.
Some of them, some of the, some of the items are not necessarily set up during the preliminary, like having the SWIP, the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, the Bill of Assurance, that's set, has to be put in before the final plat, and the requirements on that, which doesn't comply. Soil test, which is something done after the approval. So some of these things that are on here are gonna stay, does not comply, becomes part of the, the requirement that they have to meet.
We've ordered the soil test, we're waiting for Anderson to give us the results. We're gonna do erosion control and SWIP, I mean, there's just no way we're gonna do construction without that. ADQ will not permit us to move forward. What was the other one? Bill of Assurance, we turned in a preliminary bill of assurance as was required, and when we get to the final, we'll have to get that approved.
Correct. And then some of the areas that are, some of the tracks, naming the use of those, you've done that on some of them, but there's still some that are questioned as to, you've got future access points, but there are other tracks.
Everyone I thought was gonna be future right-of-way, I labeled future right-of-way. Everything else, we're considering to be open space.
I'd call a question, Mr. Chair. I'd like to call a question.
I'd call a question.
We're gonna move, move forward, if you're ready to go ahead and hear your motion.
Absolutely.
So a motion in the affirmative propose, to approve the proposed preliminary plat of Pinnacle View subdivision, Holloway Engineering applicant pending any other staff or commissioner comments.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion?
I have one question, is it Pinnacle View or Pinnacle Heights?
It was Pinnacle View, but the, that conflicted with another subdivision in the county, so they were required to change. I haven't, I do not have confirmation from the county whether Pinnacle Heights is an approved subdivision, but that's another on the checklist that'll have to be verified.
So the motion on the table at this point is correct, that it'd be Pinnacle View that we're approving?
Either way, once all the checklist is conformed, that, that'll probably change, but yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Does in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no?
No.
No. Preliminary plat does not have. So, we will move on to item number three, amendment to the code. Uh, Mr. Grummer, staff report, please.
Item, um, item number three is a code amendment requesting a master, a amendment to the master zoning map from C three to C two for property located north and east of Commercial Park Drive. This property... This property is located on land just north of property that you saw last month and approved a rezone from C three to PRD. Uh, that request is currently with the city council. After that approval, the, um, uh, we had a discussion with Mr. Pfeiffer, and the concerns that staff had was that the remaining C three would be in conflict with the single-family residential, um, use that was proposed in the PRD. So, after discussing with Mr. Pfeiffer, he agreed that a downzone to a C two would, would be, uh, would be okay. So, clarification on the map that we sent out, we included a parcel to the north, which is actually right there, that's actually the City of Maumell Public Facilities Board, uh, so that's being pulled off, it doesn't include that parcel, that has to be approved by the Pub- Public Facilities Board before coming forward, but the remaining, the remaining land would be, um, is requested zone C two. That would create a, a downsizing in the area that would conform more with our town center area and create a buffer, reduce the likelihood of a heavier commercial use that would show up across the street from the, the area that was zoned last month by the planning commission, such as warehouses right across the street from possible, um, single family. So, uh, this would allow for a more town center, a lower, lower, uh, heavier use or lower use commercial. It also includes, um, the, the right to do C, uh, R three residential multifamily. So just keep in mind that a rezoning of C two in the area would allow, the area to the north was, um, rezoned to C two, and apartments replaced there, so. Staff recommends a due pass, um, due pass recommendation to Maumell City Council to rezone the property from C three to C two.
Any questions or comments to staff?
Yeah, procedural question, I guess, since our previous rezoning of the property across street from this is still before the city council. If the city council does not approve that, what impact will this have?
So I told, uh, we told Mr. Pfeiffer that if that does not get approved, then he has the right to pull this from the city council agenda, if you approve it and it moves forward. At the same note, staff is, uh, we all agree that the area has set dormant, uh, and he knows that, um, uh, he's, he's looking for a change as well. So regardless of whether the PRD is approved by city council or not, staff would still support this as a rezone to a C two, but he has the ability to pull it if he wants to.
Did you hear from any of the industrial property owners?
Uh, we received no public, no public comment.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments to staff? Does anyone have a motion?
Is this a due pass? I'm to counsel.
Uh, this goes to council, so recommendation is due pass to city council.
I make motion, a due pass motion for the request to amend the master zoning map from C three to C two for property located north and east of Commercial Park Drive.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Does in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Does opposed, no?
No.
Have a due pass recommendation, we'll move on to item number four, the code amendment regarding short-term rentals. Mr. Grummer, staff report, please.
All right, this amendment was, um, is sponsored by city council members Doug Shin and Michael Tierney. Councilmember Tierney stated, uh, that this amendment is to create a registry of short-term hotel businesses operating within residential areas and establish a contact person to assist the police and fire departments in the event of, of emergencies. Currently, this is a shadow business, and the city has no way to identify where the short-term hotels are operating, which are subject to sales tax like any other service. Creating this registry will enable the city to deal with the concerns of residents living next to these businesses and assure that event venues do not occur in residential areas. Uh, councilmember Shin stated, it is the fastest-growing segment of the hospital, hospitality industry, and will continue to grow in our community. There are twenty-two in our, in our area excluding short-term apartments. It is not just used by tur- tourists, many businesses, travelers are using them in, in our area also. It is also subject to sales tax, uh, sales tax. Neighbors have expressed concern over strangers coming and going, and an HOA representative also reached out to me with tracking questions. Uh, this addition to the code will assist in reaching agents of the rental in case of emergency. And one other, uh, from staff standpoint on adding this to, uh, the code would also place restrictions on what type of events can be held at these, uh, short-term rental, so, such as having a residential house in the middle of a neighborhood being used for uh, events like weddings or gatherings, so protects the intent of the neighborhoods. Staff recommends approval. I'm sorry, staff recommends due pass recommendation to city council.
Any questions to staff?
Do we have, does this line up with any adjoining, uh, Little Rock, does it match up, or not so much, or new for us, new for everybody?
Um, it's more similar to what they are trying to pass in Fayetteville, but not identical to any one particular ordinance.
So if you have more than three, you can, you don't have to register as long as you have three rental houses or less.
And that's pretty standard in the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we're not placing a, a burden that wouldn't be equal if somebody wanted to get rent houses in Fayetteville or Springville or where?
Right, yeah, that's identical to Fayetteville.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion for a due pass to amend sections twenty-six dash one and ninety-four dash one concerning short-term rentals?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Does in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Does opposed, no? All right, we, if they do pass recommendation, moving on to item number five, a code amendment concerning private streets. Uh, Mr. Grummer, staff report.
This amendment was proposed by the mayor, um, it's part of, uh, kinda goes in line with the subdivision that you, uh, just reviewed in Pinnacle View. Uh, it had long loops and, uh, long cul-de-sacs, which this ordinance spells out specifically that private streets for residential development, um, may be approved, but it, uh, it's only permissible in the form of cul-de-sac and short-loop streets. Uh, after review with staff and, uh, and discussing by taking out that, uh, but re- requiring the, um, other, the other part of the ordinance to remain allows the, uh, the approval of those streets, um, by engineering design. So, um, after speaking with fire department and, uh, the, uh, public works and other staff, no one is, was in opposition of those, uh, those. The reason why that was put in originally, from what I understand, is because we had streets that were, uh, that were designed as private streets, and they weren't, uh, built to the city standards. But now we require that all streets be built to city standards, and that's where, uh, that sentence really doesn't have a place anymore, because we still hold them accountable, uh, in the engineering design. Staff recommends due pass recommendation to city council.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer, any questions to staff or comments? Uh, we're gonna pay a motion?
Due pass?
Correct.
Yes.
I'll make a recommendation, due pass recommendation to the city council for the request to amend section seventy dash one thirty-two concerning private streets.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Does in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Does opposed, no? We wish a due pass recommendation, item number six, a discussion item regarding review of the master land use plan, Mr. Grummer.
So it's time for, um, the, the ordinance, uh, section fifty-four dash eighty-one of the Maumell City Code pertaining to planning and land use states that the planning commission shall cause the land use plan to be reviewed a minimum of once every five years. The last review is pointed out in the highlighted section, uh, in front of you, the last review and new map adoption occurred on August fourth, twenty-fourteen, so it is past time for another review. A, a motion by the commission would be in order to initiate this process, so, um, I did not have that on the agenda, uh, I would ask that, that be added, uh, to the agenda, and, uh, voted to initiate that process.
Would anyone like to add that to the, the agenda?
Sounds like we have a choice. My right, my ordinance, whatever.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah, I guess I am, make a motion to move it on to the...
I'll second.
Scott, you, and I'll let the, the, the director decide when that is appropriate, so.
Okay, well, I'm, you're, and I didn't mean to step ahead, uh, if, if you feel like, the, I didn't catch the wording in the ordinance until later, and, uh, if you don't feel like that it is necessary, um, but it, uh, says planning commission shall cause the land use plan.
Yeah, it says we gotta do it.
Well, it says we shall cause it to be reviewed.
Yeah.
It says we have to review it.
Maybe somebody else do it. Thank you, council, for making that clarification. So it sounds like we're going. So, we'll think you need...
Up, up to the commission.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Does in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no? Okay, now it is on the agenda, so do we have any commentary or a motion on the actual item?
Scott, do we, do we need to do any changes here, or do you want some time, or?
Well, we're gonna need time, so this is just, just initiating the review process.
Yeah.
It's gonna take several months for us to go through and evaluate it.
It's just a discussion item then, is what you're saying.
It's just basically giving, uh, uh, saying that you're...
So we don't really vote on it, we just had to vote to put it on the agenda?
It doesn't change.
Well, no, I think, I think we now have to vote on officially as a commission deciding to initiate it, and set the wheels in motion, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's basically a resolution that we want this done, and...
I'll make a motion that we initiate the master land use plan review.
All right, I have a motion and a second before the motion, uh, any discussion? Does in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Does opposed, no? We are so initiated, I will now close the public hearing, move on to liaison reports, uh, March first. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
There was the second reading of ordinance ten twenty-three amending the Maumell land use plan, which was the area at the former Maumell Water Management, the open space cha- requested change from open space to PRD. Marion Scott spoke, Brad Frederickson spoke, Ron Harris spoke, um, and it was a fairly lengthy discussion. There was also the second reading of ordinance ten twenty-four amending the Maumell zoning map for that same area.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, uh, March fifteenth, Commissioner Fisher?
I've already complained to our planning director about the length of that meeting. I didn't get home until nine fifteen, but be that as it may.
You know they have the video, do you?
Yeah, but I would have missed the mayor's state of the city comments for forty minutes. All right, on the agenda, uh, the biggest portion taking up the time was the hazardous animals, the dangerous animals. Third reading of the ten twenty-three and ten twenty-four, both of those are concerned C A W changing ten twenty-three to S U R and ten twenty-four to PRD, both of those passed. It shocked the hell out of me, but hey. On, uh, new business had approval of traditional use permit on Saint Nicholas Episcopal Church. Uh, then there was the first, uh, reading of ordinance ten twenty-five and ten twenty-six, uh, which was, uh, the adoption of the, uh, land, uh, use for Pfeiffer, uh, the special use residential and PRD. And so that was just first reading, and that was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, assignments for month of April, uh, I have April fifth, and Commissioner Ramsey, you have April nineteenth. Does anyone have anything else?
We're adjourned. Second.
All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Does opposed, no? We're adjourned.